Okay, Towns EBA, we are live. We are recording. Phone lines are opened. Go fight.
Thank you, Matt, and welcome to the Town of East Hampton Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for September 16, 2025. We have six public hearings this evening. Let me get going on them. The first one applicant is Jeffrey Minich at 93 Derriere Avenue in Montauk, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-5-2-15. The size and location of 11,250 square feet of 93 Derriere Avenue, Soundview Estates, Lot 9, map number 1929 in Montauk. The description is to allow an existing patio to remain 13 feet from the side yard property line where 20 feet is required. Relief sought is one variance of seven feet from 255 1110 of the East Hampton Town Code is required to allow the existing patio to remain 13 feet from the side yard lot line where a 20-foot setback is required and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is B Residence Zone X Flood Zone in a secret class is type 2. And this is a continuation due to improper notice. Therefore, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting on this?
Yes, I received them on September 10th. So, yeah, they were properly noticed after that.
Okay, so I see we have a photo up there.
I went out to the site. I know that Amber Berger had been there earlier and seen it before this. I was there a couple of days ago. I have this one, I think, one more just to show that it's in front of the house. So you just put the one up. Yeah, there it is. You can see the house to the left. There it is at the road, and there was a close-up of it. It was properly labeled.
Okay, therefore, we have gone through hearings both with the applicant and the planning department. This is to see if there's anybody in the public that would like to address this application. Matt, is there anybody online?
Stand by, please.
Hello, this is Matt Chabing calling from LTV. Just to make sure the lines are good, in which they are, and you have zero additional callers. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. With that, can we have a motion to close the record?
We're not going to discuss it, thank you. We don't have anybody here.
That's good.
I mean, it was a continuation. Okay, we'll talk about it more.
Do you have a motion?
Okay, I will. Then, in the matter of Jeffrey Minich, 93 Derriere Avenue, Montauk, Suffolk Tax Map 300-5-2-15, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and the public record at this time.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Concur. Thank you.
Next, we have Sean Eckert, 11 Rehan Avenue in Montauk, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-30-3-10. The size and location is 7,320 square feet in 11 Rehan Avenue in Oceanside, Montauk, map number 2730, Lot 67 in Montauk. The description is to allow an existing retaining wall, steps, walkway, and fence to remain on a parcel of land within jurisdiction of freshwater wetlands. Relief sought is a natural resources special permanent pursuit to 255 420. Then variances from 255 430, minimum wetland setbacks of the town code. A variance of 37 feet is required to allow a defense and retaining wall steps then walkway to 63 feet from a wetland where 100-foot setback is required and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is B Residence Zone X Flood Zone in a secret class is type 2. Counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
I would like to talk to Joel. I don't know if you have a co... I'm sure you submitted him, Joel. Without Samantha here, I'm getting... It's not the same process as normal, but I'm sure Joel has. Because sometimes I email him. Did you email him, Joel?
Oh, no, I do email and I do submit.
Yeah, I'm sure it's good. I just wanted to double check. Yeah, we have proper affidavit of notice and posting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I went through a few pictures of this. There's the posting from a distance. It was properly posted. Next. And the close-up to show the date and time. Next. And this is the area in question in the front there for us. Then I did just walk down to the back of the house and took a few more shots. So it'd be north of the side of the house. Next. And it's a shot of the pool that had gone in. And next is the other area in the back that has the stone. And I believe that's it.
Thank you. Joel? Joel, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening, Chairman Delina, Board members. Joel Halsey, on behalf of Lighthouse Land Planning, representing the property owners of the property located at 11 Rehan. The proposed property project is innocuous but serves an important purpose. Previously, the driveway on this property was a semi-steeply slope grade going into the property, and that was not the main issue. The main issue was the original driveway drove over the septic tank. I have submitted a survey to the file that does depict this driveway. I submitted that last week. When the new owners bought the house, they realized that this was a big issue and could be hazardous. In 2021, they got approval from the Highway Department to build a wall, but did not realize it was within wetland jurisdiction. I did submit the Highway Department approval to the record as well last week. Furthermore, after the wall was built, the owner received a CO issued for a building permit the month before the wall permit was issued by the Highway Department. And a second building permit was issued a CO in 2020... Issued a building permit in 2023, when they... So that was for the pool. And when they... They went for the CO for the pool. That's when the building department noticed that the wall was within jurisdiction of the wetland. And that's kind of what raised the issues here tonight. The original driveway was not well-designed. It was potentially dangerous. The likelihood that the current sanitary system is load-bearing was very low. And over time, this area could have collapsed with the driveway, with the cars parking on top of it, creating a situation that caused harm and potentially detrimental to the environment. The application is not asking for anything other than to legalize a few minor structures, which are very important to the residential structure in maintaining the sanitary system in a good location. Board has any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
You might go first.
Yeah. That's a whole bunch. Okay, the first thing you said, the C of O. The garage... The house was originally built with a garage under. So the driveway... When you say the driveway was...
Went up a hill. Yep.
Came uphill and then down into the garage?
Up a hill into the house. If you've got to walk up those... These steps to get to the first level of the house. So the driveway came up and then into the house. Basically, it's a two-level house.
Right. Okay, but the garage originally was underneath the house.
No, no. If you have pictures of the front of the house.
Yeah, there was the first picture, the leaf.
I have some near map. That's helpful. Or do you want a picture now?
Came in and then... See, this is the top. This is the second somewhere here. So it drove up the hill into the first floor essentially. But now there's stairs that lead up to the first floor, and it's leveled out with the retaining wall.
Okay. And that happened in when? When did they change that?
2021 is when they got the Highway Department approval. December 2021.
Okay, and that's when they also applied to the Highway Department.
December 2021, they got the Highway Department approval. October of 2021 is when they got the approval, the building permit to move the garage and build the lower...
Okay, but now there's a variance required. I don't know if the Highway Department really is standing to allow that to happen. I know there was something about a safety issue, but...
Well, you can't issue a variance on something that's on Highway Department property.
The part of this wall is in front of us because it's on the property of the house also.
Exactly. And it was not owned by the property owner at the time, the Building Department or the Highway Department. And the Highway Department knows that it's there. Again, it was... There was an error at the end of the day. We're trying to fix that error right now.
Okay, I guess with the bothersome to me, it had a septic tank that they thought might be crushed or failing or whatever, and there was no other option that they suggested, that like maybe a new sanitary system?
Well, I mean, as you can see, the lot's pretty strange. Right here, there's a Leipa power pole, so there's no room there. So basically, it's in the best location it can go. Unless you want to... Unless they want to try to get Leipa to move the pole.
You're saying that there can never be an upgraded sanitary system on this property?
Excuse me?
Are you saying that there could never be a place for an upgraded?
I'm not saying that there could never be an upgraded sanitary system. There could be. But if anything, retaining wall is going to help protect the upgraded sanitary system. But because on top of it, sanitary systems can't be placed in a... I can't exactly... 17% grade or something like that. So at the time, this would have had... If you were going to upgrade the sanitary system, a retaining wall would have been required for a new sanitary system, property in the future.
But you'd have a new sanitary system, which would be an environmental benefit.
It would be, but again, there's not really much of a nexus for a sanitary system and a retaining wall.
Well, between a pool... I mean, it never came in front of us, right? But obviously, there was a pool and there was an expansion of GFA in the garage.
There hasn't really been any expansion of the house.
Well, the garage was converted from a garage to GFA, right? And a bedroom.
In 2021, garages were considered GFA. I don't know where, when it stopped being considered GFA, but it was completely always been GFA. If you review the town code, garages have never not been considered GFA.
So the wall is part of the building permit that was issued, except for this portion that we're seeing that came out a little bit further. I'm interested to know, in the original building permit or the most recent building permit, was this wall included in that?
Well, technically, the wall doesn't need a building permit because it's less than four feet high and it's in the front yard.
That's right.
So that you mentioned in your earlier comments that it was going to help for a future... What you mean? Did you mean a future sanitary system?
I'm saying it's helping retain the existing sanitary system in place right now.
Basically, it was built just to bring the grade up so that we could have a different confirmation entering the house.
The grade really hasn't changed. They... I mean, they used to drive up a hill and basically park on top of the sanitary system.
They were able to move it out a little bit with a few steps, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't get to read your memo until right before the meeting because we only got it late. But I have read it. But I think you're saying that the retaining wall was put there to just stop cars from driving over the tank?
Correct. It created...
Okay. So it's not really a structural thing? I mean, I guess we look at alternatives. Couldn't stake... Someone could have staked out the area, put a little, I don't know, barrier, fence. It's not a solid retaining wall to achieve that goal of...
Yeah, of course you could.
Rather than a retaining wall?
Yeah, you could have. I mean, again, is there a detriment? I mean, there's been no detriment pointed out to the wetland of this retaining wall.
Understood. I'm just asking alternative, like an alternative, yeah.
There could have been alternatives. I'm sure there could have. Again, eventually in the future, if and when the sanitary system ever does get upgraded, a retaining wall would be needed, put in this location. Can't... Like I said, you can't have sanitary systems in a... I believe it's a 17% slope... 17% slope. 17 is pretty steep. So 7% slope, I think it is. Again, I'm not a sanitary engineer. I did speak to a sanitary engineer regarding this situation, and they said, hey, well, probably not a bad thing there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question for counsel, if I may, just for the record. So I understand you're saying that we... You're saying we don't have jurisdiction over things that are not on the property. That's right. But counsel, I just want to understand, is the Highway Department has jurisdiction to not consider wetland setbacks or things like that?
Well, I think all the highway... When you get a highway permit, that's just them saying that they're okay with it in terms of the right-of-way. They're not making any claims as to wetlands or any other things of that nature. Like if you put a Belgium block apron in, you have to get highwayed to make sure. It's to protect the town right-of-way, in the right-of-way.
But they're still not accountable to the natural... Like they wouldn't... They don't have to show deference to the zoning board with respect to the natural resources.
I would say I don't know of...
Again, this is for my education.
Yeah, I need to check on exactly how their process works. But as far as I'm aware, they issue permits without regard... They don't talk to the Building Department or the Planning Department when they issue permits, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Yeah, I mean...
I would like to understand that just definitively at some point.
Yeah. You still need to get... Just because the highway signs off on something doesn't mean that it's necessarily allowed. They don't grant approvals over somebody else.
Yeah, they're basically signing off on the fact that the structure is in there right away.
They just don't... All they care about is that a stone plow can get down the street.
Okay. So what... So we still have jurisdiction to...
Yes, I would say... I would say you'd have some jurisdiction here in terms of these structures, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But the TAM is also saying that part of the retaining wall is located off the property, which is why it falls into the Highway Department's jurisdiction.
Yes, it does. So the retaining wall that's on the property, Highway doesn't care about. That is not... But if you look on that blue line...
Yeah, yeah.
That's the property line. So that retaining wall section that juts out into the road, that's on town property.
But are you saying that we only have jurisdiction regarding the variance over the part that's inside the property line? Or we have jurisdiction...
I would say...
Overall, because the closest point to the wetland is... Is it the part that's off the property or on?
The closest part is off the property.
Okay.
The wetland, you see those? You can't...
I know, yeah. That's what I was thinking. It just...
It doesn't have line... It doesn't measure to the wetland on Sunday.
Yeah, which is another issue.
Wetland measures to the corner of the house.
I mean, at the end of the day, you've got a retaining wall that's across the street from a very small, very disturbed wetland.
Sure.
So I'm trying to... You know, I don't know where this is going, but I, you know... You know, I'm wondering if there's issues with the retaining wall. I'd like to know if I can address them right now.
I don't make decisions on the fly, so I can't say there's issues. I'm just trying to understand. Obviously, we have a document that you submitted into the file that said that the Highway Department was like cool on this. But I'm asked... Because it's noticed, the retaining wall, this is relief necessary to allow an existing retaining wall?
I would say that the applicant kind of went, I would say, backwards here. Probably in the correct course of action, they should have gotten these approvals and then pursuant to getting a Highway Department okay. And that's not what happened. They got Highway first, but that doesn't mean that you guys don't get to look at it. Just because Highway signs off on it, doesn't mean that we are not involved any longer. But in... If this was done, if I had... If this is a vacant piece of property and someone had developed it and proposed things within the Highway, the Building Department would have said, go... If Highway signs off on it, okay with us.
Right. So Joel, I'm not trying to say or tip or anything like how I'm feeling about this as a board member, but I just really wanted to understand our... What our jurisdiction is and it's not. So, thank you.
Should we hear from the Planning Department?
Yeah.
Thank you, Joel. Good evening.
Sarah Lewis for the Planning Department.
Sarah, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
The subject property is located at 11 Rehan Avenue in Montauk and is zoned as a B Residence. This is known as the Ditch Plains area, which is characterized by higher-density residential development and contains extensive freshwater wetlands that are part of a complex drainage system that flow into Lake Montauk. The subject wetland is located on a property that was purchased by the Town of East Hampton for open space preservation, which is across a paved public road. In addition to the habitat value, this wetland is significant for attenuating stormwater and conveying surface and groundwater through the Ditch Plains watershed. I think Joel covered a lot of the property history. I just wanted to note that the closest part of the retaining wall to the wetland is 63 feet. The closest point on the owner's property is 74 feet. The impact on the retaining wall and the nearby wetland is kind of difficult to quantify since it is across the street. The Planning Department has not identified any specific environmental impacts from the retaining wall to the wetland. However, it may alter surface runoff patterns. I just also want to note that the applicant is proposing to cut back the existing gravel area in the backyard to reduce coverage. The new coverage will be 2,936 square feet. 3,498 square feet is currently covered. I also want to note in the TAM, I think I said that they were over on coverage, but that's not the case. Allowable coverage is 3,600 feet, square feet. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anybody in the public would like to answer this? Come to this application? Address the application? Matt, is there anybody online?
There are zero callers on the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So are we making a...
Yes, can we have a motion?
Yeah, can we have a motion? In the matter of Sean Eckert, living Rehan Avenue in Montauk, Tax Map 300-030-10, to make a motion to close the public hearing and the public record.
Second.
I concur. I concur.
Concur. Thank you. Our next applicant is Jasmin Imad Khalil at 84 Northwest Road, East Hampton, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-91-1-1.7. The size and location is 340,720 square feet, which is 7.82 acres at 84 Northwest Road, James E. Dunlop Sr. in Adelaide, H. Dunlop. Lot 1 filed October 10, 2000, is map number 10,507, East Hampton. The description is to allow an existing tennis court to remain within the minimum side yard setbacks. The relief sought is one variance of 12.2 feet pursuant to 255 1110 of the East Hampton Town Code is needed to allow the tennis court to remain 47.8 feet from the side yard lot line where 60 feet is required. As on existence, this A5 Residence X Flood Zone. To counsel, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
Yep, I review the affidavit and notice and posting. And everything seems to be in order. Jurisdiction for doing this.
Thank you. I tell you, I had a difficult time finding this property. The ways took me down another road that this dirt road or whatever, it doesn't go through. It was difficult. So I had to go all the way around Northwest Road to find it. This is a heavily wooded, very remote area. I'll take this... The sign is posted. It's properly posted. We'll take you into the property. As you can see, that's the... The gate... There's the front of the gate there. This is a... And then there's a rear gate, and that's what I think Ways was trying to take me to, which was totally unmarkable. Going into the property, go ahead, next. That's the rear gate. And then you can see the tennis court in the next photo in the distance. That's the tennis court back there. It was hard to get closer because there's a deer fence in the way there. So but that's the tennis court, very heavily wooded in there. That's it. Hi, Shannon, how are you?
How are you? Shannon McCaffrey, Dewey's Planning.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. The subject property is located at 84 Northwest Road. The property is a flag lot that is 7.82 acres in size and was created from the James E. Dunlop Sr. in Adelaide, H. Dunlop subdivision in 2000. One condition of the subdivision was the creation of a prescribed building envelope that's required a 35-foot setback from the southern property line, which is the property line that we're seeking relief from to allow a tennis court to remain 47.8 feet where 60 feet is required. In 2014, the property owners hired a licensed contractor to construct a tennis court that was permitted by building permit number 59400 issued on May 19, 2014. The survey used for the issuance of the permit to mention the tennis court to be 47.8 feet from the prescribed building envelope, which is equivalent to an 82.8-foot setback from the southern property line. Prior to construction, the court was staked out, but it appears that the 47.8-foot setback was staked from the property line and not the building envelope. It is this field error that caused the tennis court to be 12.2 feet too close to the property line. The southern property line borders two reserves areas that are... And there is more than 160 feet to the nearest residential property line from the tennis court. This area is heavily vegetated and helps prevent the nearest neighbor from any noise disturbance caused from the tennis court being 12.2 feet too close to the property line. It would be a financial hardship to relocate the court to a conforming location. Please let me know if you have any questions.
So Sarah, that's the... Looking at that survey, you have the reserve area that goes to the road, right? And then you have the road?
So...
Right. Okay.
These are all the reserved areas.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
No, I have no questions.
Thank you. From the Planning. Who are you, Morgan?
Good evening, Board. Morgan Slater for the Planning Department.
Morgan, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So the application's for the tennis court, which was constructed under a building permit issued in 2014, and that remains open. The survey with that building permit depicts the court 47.4 feet from the property line. 60 feet is the minimum setback. I do want to make a note that the survey in the digital file is an older revision from the hard copies that we received. The hard copy was most recently revised on January 25, 2025, and that depicts the additional... An additional support court, but that's compliant with setbacks, and that's what's on the screen now. The tennis court was constructed according to the building permit plans. It's 47.8 from the southern lot line, and the reserved area is directly to the south, and that is the one that is most impacted by the variance request. Other than that, I can answer any questions the board may have.
I just want to clarify. So on one hand, some of the narrative makes it sound like it was a Building Department error. But on the other hand, Ms. McCaffrey, and it was in here somewhere, that it was a field error, meaning I think it said that it was staked incorrectly. So which...
Yeah, I put the building permit in the board's file for you to review, and that building permit depicts a 47.4 setback from that property line.
So the building permit was issued incorrectly, but...
That's what it appears.
Okay, but it was described as a field error. So when I hear field error, that feels like a builder's error relative to what was permitted. So that's all I was getting confused about.
I think the applicant can probably provide some clarification on that. My... You know, I'm providing information based on what the town has in its records.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we're able to pull up the building, the survey from the building permit, it's pretty confusing because the prescribed building envelope is shown, and so it seems as if when they did the survey, they...
When the surveyor did the survey, right?
Yeah. So it was issued an error. I think there might have been one that we've seen at one point. So...
I just saw it inside of the building envelope. It's like, oh, you're good.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the public like to address this application? Matt, is there anybody online?
You have zero callers. Thank you.
Thank you. Therefore, and the applicant of Jasmin and Imad Khalil at 84 Northwest Road, East Hampton, Suffolk Task Map number 300-91-1, 1.7, make a motion to close the hearing in the public record.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Concur. Thank you. Next, we have Jason Gold Clang at 66 Pepperidge Lane in Navagansett, Suffolk Task Map number Size and location is 84,203 square feet at 66 Pepperidge Lane, Hawksnest, Section 3, Lot 52, filed March 20th, 1978, is map number 6658 Navagansett. The description is to construct a screened porch, screened-in porch patio fence and clear 4,000 square feet of vegetation within the jurisdiction of wetlands, allow a hot tub, patio, and fire pit to remain within jurisdiction of wetlands, and to allow a fence to remain within minimum wetland setbacks. Relief saw is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255420 of the Town Code, and one variance is required for this application. A variance of 17 feet is needed to allow a fence to remain 83 feet from the wetland where 100 foot is required, any other relief necessary. The zoning district is A2 residence, X flood zone, and a secret glass type 2. Council, do we have proper affidavit of service and posting?
Yeah, I review the affidavits and notice and posting, and everything seems to be in order, and the board has jurisdiction of the issue.
Thank you. Jean?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I visited the property. It was properly posted, the posting was very visible, right, as you get to the property? Just to orient people, this house is at the end of Pepperidge Lane, a cul-de-sac Pepperidge Lane comes off of Abraham, Abrams, as I call it, Landing Road, about two-thirds of the way towards, you know, where the Devon Yacht Club and that public beach is, just to orient people. Next slide, please. Just a shot of the cul-de-sac that this comes off of, a little bit of vegetation in the middle. It's very quiet, wooded place overall in terms of character. Next slide. Okay, so I just decided I'm heading up the driveway, I'm walking up the driveway. It's not a long flag lot, but, well, it's not really a flag lot, it's just a driveway that goes up towards the house, which is setback, and it's wooded on both sides. The wetlands are sort of tucked in, where it goes from grassy to vegetated, the wetlands are tucked in there. I got a photo of them later. Next slide. Okay, continuing up the driveway, I'm approaching the front of the house, there's a little bit of clearing up front there, and then we'll get into some of the other elements of the application in a moment. Next slide. Okay, so now I've gone all the way up that driveway, and now I'm going around the back of the house, and I'm heading towards where the decking, the pool, and the other elements are. Next slide. So I've gone to the side, it's the, would be the west side of the house. There's the pool fence, the pool in the distance, you can see some of the elements that are noticed, so there's the playhouse, there's the hot tub, and then you can't really see it well here, but there's the fire pit as well where the chairs are. Next slide. And then this is noticed, so this is between the pool fence and the wood fence, it's basically on the northern part of the property, getting close to the northern property line, and that's the stone area where the chairs are on it, I believe, that also needs to be legalized in this application. Next slide. Okay, I've gone back actually to the front of the house. This, I believe, is the fencing that also has to be legalized. It runs from basically the west side of the house all the way back towards the wooded area and where the play fence is. It's transparent, I didn't measure the height, I think it's like six feet maybe. Next slide. This is just a shot of the general kind of woodland conditions around it. Now, I did have photos that I took of the area, the 4,000 square feet that was proposed to be cleared. I took them out because late in the day, we received information that the applicant has decided to exclude from this application, the request to clear 4,000 feet of steeply wooded area, so I took those photos out, but just a general idea of the property. Next slide. Oh, I'm on the, I'm on the, I'm behind now, I'm looking at the house. Again, I tried to get a little closer to the playhouse, the hot tub, and the fire pit, just from another direction. Next slide. And then lastly, I've now come around to the front of the house, that area where the steps and the two red Adirondack chairs are, that's the part that is requested to screen in as a screened-in porch. And I think the last picture I just shot is, so I went back out, it's hard to see, they're tagged, this is the basic wetland area. It's very, it seems to be very much intact, there's a lot of leaf cover. My guess is it's been grazed out by a lot of deer in terms of the understory, but it did seem that the wetlands were pretty much undisturbed and are intact. That's it, I think.
Thank you. We have Jamison, how are you?
Oh, okay.
How are you, Jamison?
Good evening, Board. Jamison McWilliams from the Adam Miller Group. I'm here on Gold Clang, 66 Pepperidge Lane. Jane did a very good description of the lay of the land, I had a whole description here of exactly where this is, but I'm going to skip that. I want to point out upfront that we are working off of, that's it, the last revised survey is dated August 6th, 2025. So a little bit of a description of the neighborhood anyway is that you'll see?
Sorry, August 6th, 2025? Oh, right, that was the new one. I know, yeah, sorry, you put it in.
Yep, that's it, where the proposed clearing has been removed. Well, that should be the date.
Thank you.
Okay, so many of the lots in this neighborhood, you'll notice, especially by Ariel, they're nice and wooded, this lot as well, being well under the allowable clearing. There are wetlands in the neighborhood, and on this one, as Jane mentioned, it's kind of plopped right in the middle of what would be the front yard, which is why the house is oriented so far, you know, to the north, which is the rear, and then also there are some grade elevation changes on the left there, which is why it's oriented a little bit also to the east, to the right. As mentioned by the notice, the application is to construct a screened-in front porch, which is on the, sort of on the backside if you're coming in from the driveway, but it was shown there where the Adirondack chairs are. That's to enclose the existing front deck, make it a porch, that's 108 feet from the wetlands, to construct a small patio on the south side of the pool. It's adjacent and just a little bit below the pool, adjacent to the wood deck, that's situated 100 feet from the wetlands, to construct a portion of the fence, to legalize a portion of existing fencing, and to remove a section of fencing. So I can get into more detail about the fencing in a minute, but that's, there's, we're looking for some fencing legalization. And then to legalize the existing hot tub, which is 112 feet from wetlands, legalize the small patio, which was shown with the table and chairs on top, and then to legalize the existing fire pit. There is also proposed to remove a little bit of hardscape between the hot tub and the fire pit, it's shown on the survey. So all in, most of this is NRSB only. The, and a lot of it is to legalize existing improvements. As we know, there's really no excuse but for the fact that my client bought it, this was all here, but much of this is not on the CO. They bought this during COVID, where most people were not updating COs, and it was prior to the requirement in the law, but they would like to legalize it now and then get some of that additional fencing. And then the one portion of the fence, as noted in the, in the notice, is a variance of 17 feet for partially, you know, the closest point of the fence is 83 feet from the wetland. And then the history of the lot is very basic and straightforward. In 1987, there was a zoning board application, subsequent approval in 87, the building permits were pulled for the existing residents, in 88, building permits were pulled for the existing pool and patio. There was a 1988 CO for all of that, and then nothing since then, and I don't believe any improvements to anything but for those small items that I described. And then in response to the TAM, where we looked a little more carefully at that 1987 ZBA file, we asked our surveyor to plot the location on the survey where that 15% to 20% slopes are located, and that was really where we were proposing some of the clearing that we wanted, so we just eliminated that from our plan, even though it was also correctly noted that the covenants restricting that clearing, we couldn't find a recorded copy, but we just removed it anyway because it's not a good place to have clearing anyway. And that's basically it, the existing clearing on the lot is the 19,679, where 31,050 is allowed, but that's all to remain the same, there's no change there. And then I'm happy to say that most of the other calculations are well under the allowable, right? The building coverage is right now 1.2%, where 10% is allowed, and we're only proposing that would go up by .1 of a percent, so it would go up to .13%. And then the total lot coverage, where 35% is allowed, existing is 10, and it's going down by .1%. So truly, not much is changing, and they're well below, but again, not much is changing because mostly we're requesting some of this to be legalized after the fact. And that's it, but I can explain the fencing a little bit more if you need me to.
Wanted to hear the explanation on it. Yeah, first of all, the fencing that I showed, I was correct that that's the one you want legalized?
You are absolutely correct, yes. That is what we are looking to legalize, it's basically on the whole, you know, the front yard side of the pool, but where we are proposing to, it's basically moving, because when you were there, the fence doesn't go all the way yet to the house. So what we're proposing, it kind of, if you don't, I'm going to come up?
Is it the black line with the X's? I see it's a busy survey, so it's a new proposed fence, yeah. Yeah, because by the way, it'll be good, because when we watch things on the LTV replay, you see what's been going on, yeah. That's the new thing.
I just showed you in the existing quarter.
Right.
And you saw in this photo, because the floor is 100 feet from the wetland, to get a pool, to approach and find this, so their preference would be to eliminate, I don't, but you know what I mean, to move at least one side back, because, you know, we're not going to hop out of school and go there, and to add some hardscape, which is supposed to be. So my understanding, anyway, and the rest of the fencing involved is the master.
Right.
And then this, there's also existing, but they don't have permits for this, and I think it goes back to that.
Yes.
So the proposal is to, you know, legalize this, actually going to remove this, remove this, but extend the fence. So basically just pluck it down.
Thank you.
Understood, thank you for that, Jamison.
So the fence that covers the large area will affect become the pool fence?
Exactly, there will.
You're suggesting eliminating the pool fence in its entirety?
No.
Just one side of it?
You know what?
I'm not taking this back, that, or, yeah, that one. We're going to remove this, and the plan is to extend, is to add this.
Right, yeah.
So it's this enclosed area of the pool, this little area is now more of a pool area, but then the entire yard is still fenced.
You have like double protection around the pool.
Double protection on one side.
Yeah, there's no clearing needed for this, it's all cleared.
No clearing, right, the, as you saw, the fence, most of it's existing, it's already kind of cleared under there, and so we're basically just trying to move the fence to another cleared portion and have it continue along that line. So there's no clearing proposed. I'm happy to report.
Any other questions?
Nothing for me?
I do not have questions. What, why are you taking a little bit of stone out?
You know, it's just a preference. Maybe they, I think they want grass there. Stone between the two, yeah.
With that little, little stone.
And it doesn't meet setbacks, so we wanted to get rid of it. Yes, she knows the plan better than I do. Thank you, Morgan.
But you're only proposing to take a small strip of that out.
Correct, it's wood.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jamison. Morgan?
Good evening, Board. Morgan Slater again for the planning department. Jamison did a really good cover of basically everything that's proposed. It's for a combination of existing and proposed structures. The wetland is on the south side of the property, it's responsible for capturing a lot of the runoff from the steep slopes to the northwest. The one structure in need of a variance is the fence, and it's not really a significant variance, only 17 feet. The other structures on the property in need of relief are pretty minor, and they all meet wetland setbacks, so the planning department believes they are not likely to significantly increase the overall impact of the property from what currently exists. They did remove the clearing from the application, which was, we're happy to see because it was in a questionable area. And the patio that is being removed, I believe it meets the separation from the hot tub now to not be considered a pool patio, so it doesn't need to meet the double setbacks, and that's why that is proposed to be removed. I can answer any questions the board may have.
Want to comment on the enclosure of the front porch?
You know, it meets wetland setbacks, it's not, you know, increasing the building coverage by a significant amount at all, it's a pretty reasonable request from our standpoint.
Can I go back on the covenant that was mentioned in the TAM? Now, I know there was a question about was that proposed clearing going to incur, making incursion into that area, but, so that's off, but in general, I think you were saying that there was supposed to be a covenant from a prior board decision, and it was not properly filed, so I guess maybe for the, for the applicant's agent, like, is that something that we can get done, like, to make sure whatever the board had asked for as a part of this application, you know, that covenant, one of the conditions could be that that covenant actually finally gets, whatever the right word is, implemented or given or recorded?
Right, so that's not a recommendation that we've been making recently, or the board has really been enforcing in recent years, you know, this was kind of a pretty new application after NRSB was implemented, so I'm, you know, the practices have changed over time. You know, we wouldn't be opposed to that covenants, you know, being associated with this property, but I do want to point out that really any clearing in that area on this property will need an NRSB, because it'll be within 150 feet of the wetlands, so there, you know, there is NRSB jurisdiction over that area already.
Then why, but the zoning board specifically asked for that covenant as a condition of approval of a prior application, or no?
Yes, they did.
Okay, so that's my question, if a prior board wanted that to be done, and it hasn't been done, like?
I mean, a CO was issued on that project, so the application was closed down in essence. Like I said, we don't have an opposition to having that covenant associated with this property, but it would just be an additional, you know, layer on top of the already, you know, it's already in jurisdiction of the wetland, so there's that protection in place there.
Thank you. Anybody in the public like to address this application? Matt, anybody online?
You have zero callers. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamison, you want to come on up and address that covenant issue?
I don't. Um, I don't, I have, I have the approval. I think you already know what the covenant is, but I could, I could state it if you.
Um, I don't, I have, I have the approval. I think you already know what the covenant is, but I could, I could state it if you, um, it was pertaining to the slopes, right? So the um, there shall be no clearing in those areas containing slopes of 15 to 20%. If the board was insistent on having that as a covenant of this approval, I could certainly ask the client. I, I, I'm curious more after Morgan's statement, um, you know, the basis of the board at that time, like, you know, what went into requesting that? Because we, as we know, we don't really do that now, but I'm happy to ask.
I mean, I personally would like, not personally, sorry, as a member of the board, not personally, as a member of the board, thinking about what prior boards wanted, um, if you could address that with the applicant. Um, I, I think it would be important to kind of close that loop, but that's just my view. I don't know how other board members feel.
I don't, I don't know. It's like, it's, for me, I'm not sure, you know, what, like you said, what necessitated that? So it'd be hard for me, but the board did decide that. I, I do, I do agree with that.
Must have been a determination, was it mentioned in determination, or, anyway?
Yeah, I was, I was reading from this 87 determination. You know, it does also have that uh language. Form of said instrument shall be subject to approval by council of this board. And I'm assuming it should have said that they have to have proof of, that they recorded it, which is obviously the missed step. I will say that there was the requirement of the scenic easement to cover the wetlands. That's what, you know, originated in this also, and at least tweeted that. And by we, I mean the prior owners from the eighties.
I think a previous board has already stated that they were looking for the covenant, and I don't know what we should do to.
So the covenant is protecting what? Did, there is a scenic easement on?
So the scenic easement is, was separate. Um, scenic easement was one of the requirements, and that is what protects, you know, it's, it's there in that box in the wetlands.
That's a box.
So the covenant, it says clearing on the subject lot shall be limited to the area of the building envelope depicted in the sketch of the Planning Department, which I'm sure Morgan has. It's a little bit hard to see. I mean, it's a little bit hard to read. Um, it then says there will be no clearing in those areas containing 15 to 20% slopes.
So if that's from the Planning Department, that goes beyond the zoning board, that goes to the Planning Board when, when they were doing the subdivision?
No, 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 planning, this is the Planning Department.
Department, I thought you said Planning Board.
Sorry, I, maybe I did say that. But it is the Planning Department sketch. Oh, no, yeah, no, Planning Department. Um, so what then happened is once Morgan was looking at this, she pulled this up. We were, the slopes that are depicted, they're hard to see on here, but they didn't line up exactly with the topo that they were seeing, um, which is why we had our surveyor plot the topo. Then he highlighted for us showing in which areas is it 15 to 20% slope, and that was where some of our.
And where is that area? Is it over the, is it in the scenic easement?
No, no.
No, it's just a, just a, on the wetlands.
Pull the old one up first. So on the old one, I believe, and Morgan can correct me if I'm wrong, it's that kidney shaped area, right?
That's 20 plus percent slopes.
That's 20 plus percent slopes.
And then the dotted is 15% slopes.
Oh, the kidney, right. Is that in the public hearing file?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Um, on our sur, it, it's almost, it's almost the same. The, the topo has changed slightly, though, according to maybe just more updated uh data that our surveyor plotted. But basically, it sits somewhere in the same area, which is why we removed the proposed clearing from that area. It's too drastic of a slope.
Just like climbed it.
You did.
Did, I enjoyed it.
Live to tell the tale.
Only three ticks.
But I, you know, for, for, I, I don't want to, again, I don't want to presume um what they were thinking, but clearly they wanted to limit clearing where there is, you know, it's slopes.
Deep slopes.
This is steep slopes, which is why we removed it as well. And I will agree with Morgan that if we were ever to propose clearing anywhere within 150 feet, we would be back here anyway. But if the board wants me to also check if we're okay to, to covenant that, I, it's one thing I didn't contemplate that you guys would ask me, so I, I would have to check with the client.
It was in the TAM, so that's why I'm asking you.
Oh, it was?
Um, as a member, I would ask if you could ask, again, my fellow board members.
So that means we're gonna leave the record open?
Yeah.
I can get that to you very quickly, so.
Okay.
So how long do you want to leave it open?
Well, leave the record open?
So it sounds like we're gonna be doing.
Yeah.
How much time?
One week.
Okay.
At least. I, I really don't need it, but okay. Do you have a meeting next week?
Yes. It's early, uh, 23rd.
Yeah, we want to wrap it up, so one week is fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, do you need ready for a motion? Yes, okay, I'm gone. Thank you, Jameson. Um, in the matter of Jason Goldclang, 66 Pepperidge Lane, Amagansett, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-127-4-10, I make a motion to close the hearing but leave the record open for one week until uh September 23rd, 2025.
For?
Oh, I'm sorry, for response from the applicant regarding uh the issue of the covenant, prior covenant on steep slopes.
Second.
Concur.
Uh, concur.
Concur.
Next, we have Jeffrey and Kim Whelan at 170 Marine Boulevard in Amagansett, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-176-4-12. Um, the size and location is 15,002 square feet at 170 Marine Boulevard Hampton Dunes Lot 49, map number 4694 in Amagansett. The description is to enclose a 209 square foot back porch within minimum wetland setbacks. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-420, one variance of 38.7 feet pursuant to 255-430 of the East Hampton Town Code, to enclose a porch 61.3 feet from the wetland where 100 foot setback is required and any other relief necessary. Zoning District is B Residence, Zonex Flood Zone, and its secret class is Type 2, with appropriate affidavit of service imposed.
I don't believe that I received any. I don't, like email, I don't know if they dropped them off to the planning department or not. I haven't got, I haven't got them as far as I know, I don't know if the applicant's here and they have a copy.
Is the applicant here tonight?
Oh.
Well, that makes it.
Well, we move on.
So I'm assuming, well, yes, somebody got this, and I, Morgan?
Yeah.
Has this one been, this one been moved back a few times to the map?
It had been postponed, yeah.
They requested an adjournment of the first scheduled hearing.
It seems like they're not here.
So we can't have the hearing?
Okay.
Scheduled date.
But it looks like they did do a posting.
They did do some.
Yeah, but there's actually an issue, can I say this if we don't open the hearing? There was a, a bit of an issue with the posting because it's there, but it's really not visible um from the road, so.
Well, I don't have an affidavit or the mail-in, so.
Right, so, um.
And they're not here.
Right, okay.
So you say we can't have the hearing.
So.
So is there a motion I need to make, or anything, or no?
I would just, uh, just adjourn it, or, or, you know, yeah. We can't have it now.
Hey, so we can, we can do a motion to adjourn the, uh.
Yeah, to a later date, and so, yeah, for, you know, proper notice and posting, you know, we'll reach out to the applicant and be like, hey, what?
Can we just cancel?
Yeah, we haven't legitimately opened it.
We didn't open it.
We haven't even opened it, so.
So I guess we don't need a motion, right? If we haven't opened it?
Yeah, we're just saying.
Well, you.
Yeah, we'll just adjourn it, adjourn it.
To a later date.
You guys have no representation?
Okay, right, okay.
So next, we have MV Realty Group Corp. at 315 Gerard Drive Springs, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-64-2-14. Size and location is 38,025 square feet at 315 Gerard Drive Springs. The description is to allow the continued reconstruction of a residence with approximately 630 square feet of decking and two, and add two second story dormers on a parcel of land containing dune land, beaches, and locate it within the town's jurisdiction of freshwater wetlands. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-420 and variances from 255-430, minimum wetland setbacks, 255-440 coastal setbacks, and any other relief necessary. The following variances are required. Variances of 29 feet, 43 feet are required to reconstruct the residence and decking 71 and 70, 57 feet from wetlands where 100 foot setback is required. Variances of 38 feet and 55 feet are required to reconstruct the residence and decking 62 feet and 45 feet from the landward edge of the beach where 100 foot setback is required, and 47.4 foot variance is required to install a sanitary system. 102.6 feet from wetlands where 150 feet setback is required. The zoning district, district is A2 Residence, AE Flood Zone, elevation nine, and the secret class is Type 2. Council do have proper affidavit of service imposed.
I reviewed the affidavits and notice and posting, and everything seems to be in order, and the board has jurisdiction over this matter.
Your vice chair?
Okay, thank you, Chairman Delane. This is the official notice, the property was properly posted. Next, please. This is the driveway um that leads down to the project before us. Next, please. This is, here we go. This is the west side of the existing residence. It's facing east, and uh this is actually um before us for a stop work order, demolition and reconstruction. It was stopped in that process. Next, please. This is a picture of, wanted to give you, I'm sure you've all visited the site, but these are concrete piers and timber pilings beneath the foundation. And uh it also supports the um decking, which I think I have another photo of. Next, please. This is, um, I'm now on the um eastern side of the existing residence facing west, and this is actually an outdoor shower. I wasn't aware of any dry wells, but this is, I just wanted to indicate this photo. Next, please. This is a photo. I'm standing, um, I'm facing west. I'm, actually, Gardener's Bay is behind me, and I'm uh letting you see the stairway to the left and the existing um second story deck. Next, please. This is just vegetation like this is throughout the entire property. This is actually path that leads to Gardener's Bay. It's just a really beautiful sight. But next, please. This is just a, I'm now, you know, in the back of the house, and I'm facing Gardener's Bay. It was a beautiful day today. Next, please. Okay, I seem to always be running into these tubes that. These, these exist like throughout the property. I'm assuming they're for irrigation, but um just clarification on that. Next, please. This is just a, what exists, the power uh that exists on the side of the house. Next, please. Um, oh, this is, um, along the um driveway, there's this barrier that's set up. It's hard to really get a visual of it because it blends right into the environment, but it's obviously there to um stop uh sedimentation into wetlands. Next, please. And again, I just, you know, it's, it, they're pretty high, and from what I hear, they're, they're very beneficial to the site zone. Next, please. Okay, I have no idea what this is. I, I.
Septic.
It's a septic, so that, I mean, that's what I assumed. But that is going right into the ground, and I, I just thought, you know, uh, clarification on that, because that, obviously, the location of the new septic will change. Uh, next, please.
I think that's the last one.
I think that is the last one. Now, the one question I have is um, like, how did this happen? How did this happen in this day and age? To think you could demolish and build a residence uh without permits?
Of course.
So I just would like a narrative.
Eric Brown from Ackerman Partners, uh, on behalf of the applicant. I'm here with Shannon tonight. Denise, in answering your question, I, I, I don't have an explanation for, you know, for, for why this has occurred the way it has. That there was, there was water damage to the original house, the, which happened in the winter, the pipes froze. The applicant then went to his insurance company, was, filed a claim and was, and was paid in or, you know, to, to have this, to have this work, you know, to have the repairs done. And for whatever reason, they did not, you know, they did not come to the town and, and request a permit. So they should have done that. We agree that they should have done that. I mean, I would point out to you that the, one of the reasons the property looks the way it does is because as soon as the, the property owner was made aware that there was an issue, they immediately stopped everything. There was a stop work order, um, you know, so the property, and I, you know, I was talking to Brian about this before the, the meeting, you know, the, the property, you know, nothing has gone on there, you know, at all. And, you know, he's a, the, he's availing himself of the process that we have to address these issues. He's waited, you know, he's been in the queue quietly for almost a year. Um, you know, he hasn't had us challenge you guys and try and compel you to hold a hearing earlier. We haven't, you know, he hasn't said we should challenge the stop work order because it's too broad. I understand, this was, this was a mistake, it was a screw up, and it shouldn't have happened. At this point, you know, I don't know what we can do except try to go forward from there. And Shannon can certainly speak to you guys about the, you know, about the technical issues in terms of the, the sanitary and those, those other types of things. There's an entirely new system proposed here, obviously, on the sanitary side. So that's, you know.
Okay, thank you for that. So the elevation we're looking at now, you're actually trying to meet FEMA?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the height, or we're not going to get into any pyramids or height restrictions?
Basically, what he's proposing to do, Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong.
In place and kind?
It, basically, we build the same house. There are, they have added some, some dormer space, which I'm sure Shannon and, and Brian can address. But other than that, it's, it's essentially what should have happened to begin with.
Right, and the footprint isn't any larger other than what we're looking at?
There's no, there's no additional coverage.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
So it's my, I mean, it's my experience that um in terms of water damage, the insurance companies need to come in immediately and remediate for, to minimize any mold outbursts and stuff like that. So they, so I mean, if they were to apply in our town in today's age, what are they gonna be, what's gonna be happening, you know? So um to that extent, I appreciate your explanation of, of the condition.
How much was demolished? I mean, how far did we get in terms of demolition?
I, I'm gonna defer to Shannon, but I don't think, I, I think to describe it as not very far would not.
Okay.
Good evening, I don't need to be sworn in again, right? Um, it's fully, it's been gutted fully.
Oh, okay, okay.
Nothing left inside, right?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Shannon.
Nothing has been stayed. Do you want me to kind of go into details a little bit?
Yes.
Please.
Okay. So um Eric's hit a lot of things already. So basically, the last CO was certificate 14830, and has the improvements of the property listed as a 768 square foot first floor, 320 square foot second floor, 168 square foot wood deck, and 414 square foot of additional wood decking. As Eric's stated, they experienced a flood and was very poorly advised by their insurance company to begin remediation and received a stop work order. As you can see, once we were hired, we did reach out to the town, the Planning Department, code enforcement about the property since, sensitivity of the property, and the project limiting fence was installed to make sure no debris were um going into the wetlands. The applicant is requesting replacing, requesting to repair the existing dwelling and construct two dormers to increase the head height for a bathroom and a closet on a second, on the second floor. The dormers will increase the floor area of the dwelling by a minimal 126 square feet, 63 square feet each dormer. It should be noted that the square footage is already be, was originally utilized as like a bathroom and bedroom closet area, but will be considered part of gross floor area now because it will have that, meet that five foot minimum to be counted. The footprint of the dwelling will not increase, and the septic will be upgraded to an IA. The engineer has kind of balanced, this is a tough site with wetlands on both. We have Gardener's Bay and wet, wetlands that border the western property line, and so we've kind of balanced it to be as best. Currently, the existing septic is basically two cesspools that are on the property line. Currently, the existing septic is basically two cesspools that are on the property line, so it'll be brought in a bit further into the property, and that whole area, once it's completed, will be restored with beach grass. The dwelling has a first-floor elevation already of eleven-point-nine and is compliant with FEMA for the flood zone AE-nine. The previous CO survey does show a wall bridge survey that was dated May twelfth, nineteen-ninety-seven, showing an elevation of twelve-point-nine. That foot difference is due to different dimes, and so that's where it's, it's, it is the same first floor, no, the floor hasn't been raised or lowered from the original And so the owner is ultimately just looking to repair what was lawfully existing and minimally increase the usable floor area, the second floor. Once all the work is completed, the property will be more energy-efficient by achieving HERS compliance, maintaining storm runoff with the use of gutters and leaders directed to dry wells, utilizing a nitrogen-reducing system, septic system. These are all net benefits to the environment and neighborhood, and the applicant also agrees to establish the scenic easement and wetland buffer area that was suggested by Brian Frank and the TAM. No issues with that. Please let me know if you have any other questions.
What was the date of the water damage?
That was, I don't have the exact date.
Proximate date?
It was a winter storm?
I think it was winter, spring of twenty-twenty-three, and so by the time they got through insurance, I mean, they made pretty good progress to October twelfth of getting the demo.
Yeah, because the building plans are dated December eighth, twenty-three?
The stop-work order was October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.
So the building plans were developed after they started work?
The building plans, I believe that they didn't really hire the architect until, because it was just kind of, you know, like when insurance happens, they were kind of just bringing down what was existing, and, but now.
Back to the question and the narrative, just so I understand, was the original plan to just demolish the house completely and resell the lot, is, oh, no, they always wanted to rebuild the house?
They, I, they wanted to keep this house. I have to say, I think they have gotten a bit discouraged during this whole process, and so that's why it has been marketed.
Sorry.
Now, Shannon, there's a, I'm sorry, Shannon.
I'm sorry. What did you say about it?
Listed at one point that they were going to sell it, but now-
It's on, it's, it is still listed.
Right, but I think if, once they get the permits, they want to keep it. I believe it's going to be for their son.
Shannon, there's quite a list of mitigation at the end of the TAM. You, you've had a chance to look at that, and you're in agreement with all of that?
Yeah, I think they're all pretty, for a lot like this, pretty standard.
Yeah, I agree. Now, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there a shed?
Yes, there is a shed. You know what? I had a picture of the shed. It didn't pop up.
I think something Brian said in the TAM was, you know, that would maybe go away, and we're, we're willing to certainly get, get rid of it.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah. Now, that, that outdoor shower, does it have a dry well? I, I'm remiss, and I didn't, I don't think it did, so I didn't see one. So I think that would, if, if that remains, um-
Wouldn't that need a variance?
We can make sure that a dry well, we can ver, either verify that a dry well is installed or one be installed.
But I didn't see one, but now, was that legally built, or did that, I'm just, I'm not sure.
And wouldn't it need a variance?
Yes, it is on the CO.
Oh, okay, okay. It is on the CO. All right, thank you, Shannon.
Can I just ask a couple of questions about this whole demolition? So when I go off to the site now, I'm looking at concrete piers. Were they done as part of the new work that's been recently happening? These concrete piers exist before the water damage or not?
I believe it was before the water damage, but I do not have-
So that's all from before. That's not, that's not part of the new work. All that you've done since the water damage is a demolition.
Correct.
So the house is, I'm looking at it when I'm standing underneath it and walked around it, that house is in the same spot, the same size as before the dump.
Same height, everything.
So everything's the same.
Already met FEMA.
Or it was always FEMA compliant.
And all you're planning on doing now is to change these dormers to get headroom on the second floor for a couple of conditions.
Correct.
Right, but everything there is kind of jarring when you look at it to try to figure out exactly what's gone on. I want to make sure that what I saw all pre-existed. That's not work that was done. The only thing that happened here was demolition, and you got your stop-work one.
Correct.
And the decks are not being expanded, they're being replaced.
And they'll be repaired, just to structuralize.
The only additional square footage will be the dormers.
Or, yeah.
Correct.
That's okay.
That's the only change, and-
That's the only change in the existing-
And it's not even increasing any hardened or building coverage. It's all within the existing.
Thank you.
Any other?
I have no other questions.
Questions for-
Good, you're from the planning? Brian? How are you, Brian?
I'm good. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Brian Frank for the planning department.
You swear, tell the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I, I think a lot of the history has been well-covered. I, I will corroborate my experiences with the property. I was contacted by Du East sometime after the stop-work order about what mitigation could occur on the property while things were being resolved, and, and, you know, we provided a, a sketch of the location of the wetlands and recommended sediment control. There's a pile of fill by that, by that shed to help keep that from going into that wetland. The board knows this is a pretty sensitive area of town. Gerard Drive is sensitive in particular. This is at the southern peninsula of Gerard Drive on the bayside. Gerard Drive is in multiple critical environmental areas. It's an important bird area. As you saw from Vice Chair Savarice's photos, there's really no dune crest anywhere on the southern peninsula here. It's, it's Gerard Drive, for the most part in this area especially, it's low, it's flat or gently sloping, and there are a couple of areas where the ground dips down close enough to the water table to have wetlands, and that's what you have on the western portion of the property. So despite the inauspicious beginning of the application, the planning department doesn't have an objection to the scale of, of what's proposed in the application. If the application were to continue to demolish the, you know, what you see above those concrete piers now, and I'm not suggesting it is, it's pretty hard to tell from what, what's underneath the plywood, obviously, but this is a highly sensitive area, and the scale of new construction should be limited. So limiting the construction to within the footprint of the house, making the, the gross floor area square foot, footage increase limited to what's provided by the dormers, I think it's about one-hundred-and-sixty square feet, putting in that new sanitary system, and then the planning, the planning department did provide a fairly extensive list of mitigation as the vice chair had mentioned, and that is because of the sensitivity of the, of this area. You, you saw that you have basically a narrow gravel driveway now that, that leads to the property. This is a flag lot, and that driveway does bisect the wetland, so the planning department has recommended that the driveway stay quartz gravel, that the driveway be configured away from the wetland a little bit, that of, of the maximum practicable buffer, which is about twenty to twenty-five feet, be established along the western property boundary, that, that's about sixteen-hundred square feet in total. I agree with Shannon's statement that the, the new sanitary system is as ideally sited as the lot allows to get the maximum separation from the wetland to the west without getting too close to the beach to the east. This is a productive shorebird breeding areas for plovers and terns, and the exact location that those species use do vary from year to year based on the site conditions, so this may be an area where plovers and terns set up shop in the future, but again, those, those exact locations are, are somewhat variable, but we know that this is a, a protected area. My guess is that the DEC permit will have a similar condition in there about a shorebird window, and if there's no shorebird activity, nesting activity within five-hundred feet of the property during, during the summer, then that's a rational basis to lift the, the shorebird window. We've recommended that in other projects. Planning department has recommended a conservation easement over the beach, and I think we've already established that the, it is important that the house meet FEMA, and I think the applicants have established that it, it does and it will. I don't think there's any harm in putting a dry well under the shower, but the separation from the wetland is, is, is pretty adequate right now. It's train, you know, it, it's going into beach sand.
Okay.
Again, there's no harm from adding a, a dry well, but in, in folkander, I, I don't think it's necessary on, on this particular-
And it's flat there, it doesn't really slope.
Yeah, it's, it's not going to run down-
It's not going to run down-
It's not going to run down the Gardner's Bay, and it's not going to run west into the wetland, or we would have made that recommendation. I, I think I was a little bit more scattered than I thought my presentation would be, so if I miss something and you have any questions, I'll, I'll do my best to answer them.
Could you show us the scenic easement?
I'm sorry, yeah, same question.
Oh, you want, you want the sketch? Now, I, I brought up the survey instead of the sketch because I realized I made my sketch on an older survey that didn't have the sanitary upgrade, but yes, I'll, I'll So this shows the recommendation, oh, I guess I didn't use the most recent survey. So you see that M-looking thing on, off to the west, that's the, that's the sediment control that's there right now, and the planning department has recommended sediment control around the perimeter. The area of the sanitary system is, is somewhat successionally wooded right now. I don't know that that's really an unavoidable impact from clearing out the cedar and the pines that's there. That should be naturalized after construction with, with, basically, dune land planting, just beach grass is, is fine and let it naturalize over time. You see the conservation easement in whatever color that is, peach, pink, something like that, and there's, I don't know if you had a question for me and related to the sketch, or you just wanted a-
A little bit on it. And what's the yellow stuff?
Can't see.
Can't see.
Yellow stuff, this?
Yellow stuff, yeah, well, there, it looks like where the decking is. Is that the decking? Is that just what it is?
Oh, that's, that's the, yeah, that, that's the decking. I, I don't, that, that's from the survey. I didn't, I don't think I did that.
Oh, okay. So how much of a scenic easement is that? It does look pretty big.
I don't know if I put it in the, in the-
Um.
I don't think it says it in the TAM.
Seaweed of the landward edge of beach as depicted on the planning department sketch.
Is, is, is that in the TAM?
No. I mean, it's going to be a area of concern, a lot, it's thirty thousand.
That, that sounds about, about eighteen, nineteen thousand square feet. If you want that verified, then, then I'll do that in the, in the office tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'd ultimately like to have the number, but the estimates-
What, in terms of the size of the scenic easement?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a comment in the TAM about crossing over a wetland as you come in the driveway. Is there anything that has to be done there, a culvert or anything else to?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know if there's a culvert in there. I, I don't think there is. I think it's just a path of fill through the wetland. And, and just putting a, a, a bed of new quartz gravel to, to kind of level out that little belly, that low spot in there, I think that's unavoidable, since that, since that's the sole access to the property.
Do you think that's an adequate solution to the problem, just filling it with more quartz gravel?
I don't know that there's really any other alternative, you know, reasonable alternative.
It has to be that way. Great.
I'm good. Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
So I, I have a question for Brian and Eric, and so I see a scenic easement, that, that's clear. What is the wetland buffer going to be?
Right, that, that was my-
That, that was about sixteen-hundred square feet of planting, you know, vegetation to be established. That's that green area.
Yeah, yes. So is that, but what I, my question is, is that going to be just a re-vage area? Is that a scenic easement? Is it a what?
Just a re-vegetation area.
It's a re-vage area.
Right.
A, a little bit more robust vegetation that's there right now, plants like bayberry and groundzol, the native shrubs that we get in the area.
Got to submit a re-vage plan for that, and is that, we don't do, just so I, also, I want to make sure we get this right on the, for these guys, is it going to be just, that's just what it is, and then we leave it? Or is there, it's not a scenic easement, so there's nothing recorded, we're just not-
No, but it, it would be beyond any clearing, you know, beyond the final clearing lines, in, in an area where all the clearing is regulated for, for one reason or another.
It's already, it's already regulated, so it can't do much anyway. Okay, so, yeah, we'll just submit a re-vage plan and then-
And Brian, could you comment just on how you assess the sort of quality of the, you know, everything seaweed of the house in terms of the dune land? Like, do you feel that it's in good undisturbed state? Is there any other, like, there was some, what looked like had been some sort of patio or whatever, but, you know, is there a view that any other re-vage is needed on the property, like within the easement, or no? It's all?
No, I, I think the only re-vegetation that's required is where the, where the sanit, where there's going to be clearing for the sanitary system and the buffer to the wetland. The rest of that is natural, and, and it's successional. The farther you get away from the beach, the more, the more robust and the larger the woody vegetation becomes.
Yeah, that's very beautiful.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Does anybody in the public would like to address this application? And is there anybody online?
You have zero callers. Thank you.
Thank you. You're good? Yep. Close it up?
Are we leaving it open for additional language for the size of the scenic easement? I don't think we need that, do we? No, Brian's going to do it.
No, we're just saying it's for the sketch, yeah.
Brian was pretty clear about it, because you had said you wanted it. Okay, so we're going to close it.
I mean, do we need an actual formal survey?
No, I think, I think we're, no, I think we're fine. Okay, so in the matter of MB Realty Group, three-fifteen Gerard Drive Springs, Suffolk County Tax Map number three-hundred-dash-sixty-two-dash-two-dash-fourteen, I make a motion that we close the public hearing and record.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Concur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, next we have the minutes, approval, draft minutes of Tuesday, September ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
Savard, I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft minutes from Tuesday, September ninth, twenty-twenty-five for the East Hampton Town Zone and Board of Appeals.
Well, second. Concur.
Concur.
Thank you. We then go into our resolutions. We have SHM Star Island LLC at thirty-two Star Island Road, Montauk Suffolk Tax Map number three-hundred-dash-six-dash-four-dash-nine, ten, and sixteen-point-one.
That was a-
I didn't do this.
That was a modify-
That was a modification?
Modification, yeah.
It was a modification, that's correct. We have a motion.
Wait, was that the one where?
Star Island.
No, I know, that wasn't the one where we wanted to-
Get more info?
Yeah, that was different. Okay, sorry, thank you.
That was a different one.
Right, yeah, just-
All right, then I'll do it. Then in the application of SHM Star Island LLC, thirty-two Star Island Road, Montauk, Suffolk County Tax Map, three-hundred-dash-six-dash-four-dash-nine, ten, and sixteen-point-one, I'd like to make a motion to accept this determination as written.
Modification.
I'm sorry, I, I spoke, that was, this one's an extension of time.
Oh, oh.
That's why I was, yeah, right.
That's, yeah, sorry, that was, I was thinking about a different one.
That's, that's why I was-
That was, it's just an extension of time.
Do your motion.
Review your motion.
Yeah, I realize that as we're, as, yeah.
In the matter of SHM Star Island LLC, thirty-two Star Island Road, Montauk, Suffolk County Tax Map, three-hundred-dash-six-dash-four-dash-nine, ten, and sixteen-point-one, I make a motion to accept the application for an extension of time.
Second.
Concur.
Concur. Thank you. Next, we have Sabina Del Amata at forty-one Gardner's Drive, Amagansett, Suffolk Tax Map number three-hundred-dash-one-seventy-four-dash-four-dash-seven.
I know there were some changes made based on board feedback. I read the latest version that was sent us by council, and so I don't need to go through And so I don't need to go through the whole, the application once again, but I'd like to make a motion in the matter of Sabina Del Amata, 41 Gardner's Drive, Amagansett, Suffolk County Tax Map, 300-174-4-7, making a motion to accept the resolution as written.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Concur. Thank you. Next, we have Chris Polly at 54 Firestone Road in Montauk Suffolk Tax Map Number 300-17-2-34.1.
This is mine. That was Terry. Yeah. This was sent back to add the condition that they do not enclose the new decking and patio, which had been left out of the original iteration of the determination. And that was in there. I did review it. Everything looks good to me. So I would like to make a motion for Chris Polly at 54 Firestone Road, Montauk Tax Map 300-17-2-34.1 to approve the determination as written.
Second.
Okay, I'll concur.
I'll concur.
Concur. Thank you. My vice chair, German, and then go into executive session for legal matter.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the zoning board of appeals on September 16, 2025 at 8:00 PM.
Second.
Concur. Concur.
Concur.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of a legal matter.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second.
Did we get a second? Okay, concur.